Okay, we'll call a meeting to order at 5:31. Roll call. Trustee Snoblin here. Trustee Grum here. Trustee Rogers here. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to consider the minutes of the August 13th meeting and table the minutes of the 21st, 23rd, and 31st meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th? Some move. A second. All in favor? Hearing no opposed, motion passes. Do we need, we don't need a motion to table, do we? Can we just leave it?
No, you just, no, we'll note for the minutes that your table approves three until that program.
Okay, public comment. District of Trustees, District Trustees allow three minutes for those individuals who'd like an opportunity to address the fire district. If you'd like to speak, please clearly state your name so the attorney can write it down. Anybody have anything?
I have a question. I noticed on here-
I know, I've asked this all the time.
Brian, do you really want me to go through this?
If I don't, if- I don't remember yesterday, Lydell.
All right, Teresa?
Right.
Do you want me to spell my last name?
No, I think I remem-
All right.
Just, what is it?
C-A-R-I-M-G-E-L-O.
Paramo. Got it.
Lake Forest resident.
Got it.
My first question is, is, I don't see on here, talking about the B budget. Is the budget going to be approved within the last two weeks?
No, there's a notice in the paper. There'll be a public hearing on the budget at a special meeting called on October 18th for that purpose. And there'll be a public hearing after which, in the special meeting, there'll be a consideration of the budget. The municipal budget law has a process that has to be followed. And one of those processes is they can publish notice. The notice is published, but in order to, they have to have 30 days' notice.
So, it's okay that a budget is being approved, reallocated after the first payment?
Sure.
So, the residents will not, won't know where this money is coming from?
Well, I mean, you, yeah, there is a budget now.
Well, yeah.
So-
Is there enough, you even said at the last meeting, Brian, where's the money coming from?
Well, I mean, that presumes-
Where's the money coming from?
That presumes there's money, there's money gonna be paid. You make the presumption that there's money gonna be paid pursuant to the service agreement, that that can't be made from the current budget, 'cause it's not, well, there's a line item in the current budget for ambulance services and contracts, 'cause you do that with Liberty ville now. There is no line item for fire services. But if there's no payments made for the fire service part of the contract, then you haven't had a problem with the amended budget. Once they amend the budget, if they make any payments pursuant to the amended budget, then they're okay. And if, and if it's retroactive to October 1st, that's fine.
And then how do we know for future that the mortgage will be able to pay if they keep this building, or if they're gonna be renting it for Dan Rogers for a thousand dollars or whatever he proposes? I mean, how, how do the people know and know this stuff before this whole October 1st stuff?
Well, I mean, there's a tentative budget. Two requirements, 30 days' notice is the notice of the public hearing, so on October 18th we'll have that. The second is a tentative, the tentative form of the budget is available, it's posted on, it's posted on the wall.
So, it's October 18th?
Correct.
Special meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and there'll be at least, there'll be at least two, well, there'll be a couple things. There's always a call to order, 'cause you gotta do that. There'll always be a public comment, 'cause you gotta do that. There'll be a public hearing, which is different. There'll be a public hearing on the budget appropriations ordinance. And then at some point, there'll be a consideration of an ordinance to amend an ordinance. Or, in fact, it's ordinance 2802, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2801.
All right. So, since it's gonna be our last presumably board meeting before the October 1st, assuming that the October 1st payment is made and everything is in order between now and the next two weeks, I just wanna make my last comments as a Lake Forest resident and family in Nolwood. I am disgusted. I, this is heartbreaking. I wanna make my comments to the two board members that have signed this agreement, excluding Carl Snoblin, who has been supportive in this whole situation. It's disgusting, it is a disgrace. You guys are killing this community back and forth. Not gonna say that karma, you know, does happen, but you know what, I hope you guys don't get to have to call 911 for your family, because it will happen one day. And I hope that you do get the best service possible, because some of these residents will not get it due to the response time that you are killing. This is a community full of love. This is a community full of family, generation of generation of this fire department that you have killed. It is a disgrace. It is, it's heartbreaking. Can't even think about it, what's gonna happen on September 29th, 'cause you are killing something because of your political aspects, not because of the love of this community. It is political, it is disgusting. To Chief Harlow and to Deputy Fire Chief Mike Issel, and to the other fire chiefs that have proceeded to this Nolwood station, thank you for what you have done. Thank you to the firefighters that are here, that are in the radio station, whatever. Thank you for what you have done for Nolwood, for Lake Forest, and for Lake Forest. Nothing to say how much we have appreciated all your good things.
Okay, next.
I would like to ask-
Yes, please.
I know the board doesn't-
Nikki Snoblin.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Nikki Snoblin, S-N-O-B-L-I-N. I know you don't normally answer questions, I'm going to start by asking a question. If you don't care to answer it, I'll rephrase it as a, as a statement. Have any plans been made for the disposal of any historical materials that may be in the building? You have many photographs along the wall, there may be other materials related to the history of the Nolwood Fire Department as well. Have you inventoried those? Do you know what there is, and do you have any plans for how to dispose of them?
Those belong to the association.
Right. Those don't belong to the fire district, so Chief Harlow, the firefighters, the trophies and such, those don't belong to the district, they belong to the firemen. So, whoever the chiefs deem should have those, I don't think the board has any issue with, with any of that stuff.
Any documents or anything of that nature, it might be appropriate to donate or donate copies to the Historical Society. If you want any assistance with that, let me know.
Absolutely.
Please. The only, Nikki, the only comment I'd add is we've got to ensure in disposing of any documents, retain copy for the Local Government Reference Act to make sure that we have a copy that we need thoroughly. If, if it's required to be maintained, then we send it to the state archivists. But if they don't need it, nothing says you couldn't have copy, or anything.
I'm thinking of documents that are probably far older and/or not relevant to the operation of the district per se, things relating to pancake breakfasts of long ago, some of the competitions and so on.
That's firefighter association.
That is an important part of Nolwood's history, and it must not be lost.
Okay, anybody else? Chief, do you have something?
Yeah, yeah, briefly. Jeff Steingard, Chief of Countryside Fire District. First, we've provided dispatch services to the Nolwood Fire District since 2014, so we'll be working with all of you folks to transition that as, as time goes on, for that agreement. Second, I just wanted to offer to the members that Countryside is in the midst of taking part-time paid on-premise applications, and we also have a couple open natural contract spots at our place. So, for those that are qualified, I'll, I'll send, I'll send you all the application and information about that. It's also available on our website. Certainly, welcome, anyone's welcome to contact me and send them in the right direction.
Appreciate you, Chief. Thanks. Okay, any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hannah Sobrin, I would like to know, yeah, one of the future monthly district meetings, and where are they gonna take place?
Well, for, for at least the immediate term, it's gonna be the same, same schedule established by the board, so it's gonna be-
Where? No, is it gonna-
Right here.
But if you rent the building, or sell it?
Well, right, if the-
Or sell it.
Again, trying to, to help out for this particular one, if the, if the building is rented, there would be terms put in there that we have to consider, the ret, the, the elections and such, so there's, it's not just rent it and have a nice day, so there's-
So, we'll be voting here also?
The meetings, for, the foreseeable future.
Right.
A district office has to be kept, so those all have to be figured out, and we haven't gotten there yet, so-
Okay, so it's same-
If, if there's a change in location, it will be widely noted.
Okay. So, like, second Monday of every month, here?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
Nikki Snoblin again. This is a matter of business. For many years, I have been volunteering my time to maintain a website, that's a joint website for the department and the Fire Protection District. The Fire Protection District, however, has been paying for the hosting fees and domain registration fees. So, I will need instructions from the Fire Protection District as to how they wanna proceed with that website, whether they want to keep it, get rid of it. I don't believe you're required by law to have a website. If you're keeping it, I'll need instructions on how to change the content to eliminate the, the Nolwood Fire Department from that website as well.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Marissa Malinowski, Nolwood resident, Treasurer of Nolwood Fire Association, piggybacking with Nikki's comments. Well, first off, I'd like to ask a question. Will there be any public comment or discussion, allow any further agenda items? Or is this-
It's required by the open meetings, eh?
Okay. Well, then, I'll, I'll ask later, but I'll, I'll put it, the plan to see right now.
There won't be any more public comment in this meeting.
Okay, then I'll ask, that's fine. Agenda item nine, equipment surplus and equipment inventory. Again, piggybacking on Nikki's comments as far as memorabilia and other items within the building of historical significance that the association owns, the association has purchased equipment for fire department use. Has that been taken into account?
To the best of my knowledge, the equipment that was purchased by the association was given to the fire department, correct?
I bet that's right, that's not correct. It was purchased for fire department use.
So, you still own it? You guys maintain it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if it's, if it's owned by you and it's not owned by the department, then it's still the, the, the association's, and you'll need to provide us a list of what it is, and if you wanted, donate to another fire department, or what you'd like done with it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Chief?
Hi, Rich Karani, Fire Chief Libertyville Fire Department. Just wanted to tie on to Chief Steingard's comments. Since the meeting last week, I've been soliciting chiefs in the county for POP positions who has openings, and one chief that did say I could use their department, mention their name tonight, is a Gray's Lake Fire Department, is also looking currently for paid on-premise personnel, so another avenue for anyone who's interested, so. And I'm sure there'll be more, they just didn't give me permission to speak.
Great.
Chief, Chief Seibert from Lake Forest Fire. Along the same lines, I brought tonight, I brought some letters to all the Nolwood employees offering paid on-premise position with our department, as well as applications. I will leave them here. I do also have a letter that we plan to send out to all the residents and business owners from Chief Karani and myself. We're hopefully to, to put out a, a letter that's gonna also include some information on private alarm monitoring, but within that letter, where there'll be some copies for people to take home tonight, there is an invitation to attend our Lake Forest Citizens' Fire Academy starting October 9th. We welcome all Nolwood residents and business owners and the entire area.
Is that something, Nikki, that you would like electronically to post, or no?
Yes, please.
I can get that to you. But I'll leave these here tonight, I don't know how you want it personally.
Anything else for public comment? Okay, moving on, number five, attorney's report. Anything you'd like to talk about?
Nope, got nothing to report. I'll apply it in Springfield for the moment.
Okay. Let's do the treasurer's report. Madam Treasurer, you are up.
Currently, Lake Forest Bank and Trust, $36,409.85. Lake Forest Bank and Trust checking, $223,221.01. Lake Forest Bank and Trust Reserve, $274,158.49, heading dash 2905. Total current assets, $533,818.39.
And budget track.
Budget track, and the website we're on track, except for the area was over, actually two. It was a contractual obligation to the motor vehicles, which is, you'll see in the city that was a, a rush for the Chevy Traverse. And the attorney's fees were a little bit higher than normal, so that's included in the folder budget.
Okay. Trustees, any other questions on the budget? Right here, now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Motion by Grum, second by Snoblin. Roll call vote. Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Snoblin?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Rule of outstanding invoices.
A long list. So, it's a total of $74,274.01. Country Fire Protection, the debt of Lake Forest Bank and Trust, the tools, $221.51. BioTron, $275. VMS, $1.476. Ranger, $1422. MES Services, $265.50. TDS, $304.88. Comcast, there was a typo, supposed to be 1904.
1904?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, payroll. And we have Henry Schein, EMS Support, $868. Dinges Fire Company, Amputative Service Call, $142. Village of Libertyville, $29,612.50. New Comet, $1,004.99. Bridge, $2920. Impact Networking, $1950. North Shore Gas, $11641. Five Alarm, $11 pair of rescue gloves for rescue tools, $679. Backflow testing, backflow test, ENS, backflow test, and Lake County Licenseing, $651.80. American Gas is $24.50. EMP Bandages, $33.56. Lake County Public Works, $6501. North Shore Water Rec, $1731. Attorney's fees, $202.30. Lake County Collector, $30.25. Fuel Services, $594.81. The Gorton Community Center Meeting Room, $35. City Card, $4,199.81, that's for the Chevy Traverse. And team shirts, $404. And the next month's TDS, $304.88.
Pete, the only question I have, and since, maybe you can ask, if not, we'll contact with Countryside, who, since we're entering into that other contract to work, canceling, I guess, canceling service, is that something we can contact somebody and work that out?
Yeah, Deputy Chief Smith is usually the one that's shot, yeah.
Trustee Grum said he'll contact her. Okay. Rule of outstanding invoices, unless there's any questions?
And then there's just the one city card.
Right, that was for the-
Traverse.
Traverse.
And that's it.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the outstanding invoices?
In the amount of $74,274.62.
Well, hold on, does that, does that have to be adjusted, TMI, or did you?
Yes, I'll have to adjust the 1904 from the 1980.
What are we doing, are we adding or subtracting?
We're subtracting.
How much are we subtracting?
We're subtracting, and, hold on.
1904?
1904 minus 1904.
171. 171.
What, 171?
So, 74, 103, 62.
74, 104.
103, 62.
103, 62. Okay.
62?
62. May I have a motion to approve the outstanding invoices in the amount of $74,103.62? Motion by Grum, second by Snoblin. Roll call vote. Trustee Snoblin?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Number eight, nominations, resignations, terminations. Chief, who of you, you got anything for us? Okay. Then we're on to number nine. Discussion action on the following, this is something I worked on with the chiefs, Karani and Seibert, to walk through and kind of discuss all of these items with everybody here and with them when necessary. So, chiefs, if there's something that you wanna jump in on this, please feel free to jump in on.
I just, just to inform the board, I brought, asked all my chief officers to come, so they can hear what's going on and offer any assistance, they'll be helping throughout the process of the transition. And then, Assistant Chief Kent Colmers, our fire marshal, is here also, who's gonna assist with the bureau portion of whatever the transition parts are for that.
Okay. Employees, Brian, you said, do we need to have a lesser resignation? Is that how you wanted to put it?
Well, you, you can do, on October 1st, the services are no longer needed.
Right.
Because the services are recreated, but generally, there's, there's gonna be exceptions, but generally, that's true. So, they'll either resign, or you'll terminate.
Okay.
The services are no longer needed. You need to give them a notice, if you're gonna terminate them, and if you're not gonna terminate, if you're gonna resign, you can resign.
Okay, so, should we send out an email to all employees and ask for resignation? Is that, would that be the proper thing to do?
Probably, probably the better solution would be to direct me to prepare, direct me to prepare notices of termination effective October 1st.
Okay.
And, once I do that, I'll forward, I, I don't know the names of the people, I mean, I need the, you know, what was on the website, we know is old and so, I mean, the names of the people, I can use the address of the district, that's not a problem, but I'll need to know the names.
Of the roughly, what, 40 active? Okay, can we get a list of the active employees?
Anybody who's receiving the paycheck from the district.
Okay. Is Johnny to do that, or have you got that?
I can do it on payroll.
Okay, so you'll do that to Brian, the payroll report?
And then, when I get the, when I get the letters, I'll print the letters, and I'll send PDFs, I can email PDFs to, you know, direct me to do it, and you have a motion directing me to prepare the notices of termination and authorizing the board president to sign the notices on receipt.
I'll make that motion. Someone?
Did you make it, Hal, or he?
All right, I'll second it. You want a roll call or a voice vote? Trustee Snoblin?
No.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Last checks. Last checks won't, will they be active until the 30th? So, after the 30th, payroll will be turned into TMI, and you'll put together checks, correct?
Yes.
I'm preparing right now for their end of the year checks.
Okay.
I should have that audited complete by this week, so I'll be turning it in this week, and you can go ahead and process it through at any time.
With all the stipends and shifts and everything?
Correct. Auto pay, call pay, everything.
Okay. Chief, I'm gonna pass over others for the moment. Chief Karani and I spoke along with Chief Seibert, and wanted to ask you, John, if you wanted to do on the 30th, a walkout with anybody who wanted to do it, with the chiefs or whomever you wanted, yourself presenting them their helmets, their helmets and/or Class As uniforms. Do you have any interest in doing that?
I'll take care of my guys, I don't need the help from them.
Okay. So, you'll handle all that. Okay, Class As, I assume, since they fit the guys, they're gonna keep them?
And most everybody bought their own, yes.
Okay. Uniform returns, that's just like Class As, I would assume, correct? I mean, their uniforms are, they're, we don't rent them, they own them, correct, is what I'm getting at?
T-shirts and the pants they buy.
Right, so they own them. All right, equipment inventory. Conduct complete inventory of equipment. Been talking with the chiefs, Karani and Seibert about this, and Chief Karani had offered, he said he might have two guys that are on light duty that could assist with, with inventory and the rigs in the building. Okay, anybody have any other thoughts on that? I, I, I'll be on, or, I'll tell you what I've done, and then I'd like to hear comments from Trustee Snoblin and Trustee Grum. I spoke with Mike Hady, only because I didn't know who else to talk to on this, and he's gonna give me a dollar amount to provide one guy to basically have a laptop and do all the input, and then with the assistance maybe of two guys from Libertyville, go through and start to inventory trucks and machines and such. You got, either one of you have any other thoughts on that?
So, just one I would ask, is there any kind of current list available that someone can start from? And then, second, you know, I think, I can't, I'm offering a lend to people to help-
Right.
-input stuff, but we really would need somebody from Nolwood to work with them to identify what, you know, and, you know, as I've been hearing earlier, there's apparently association-owned property, district-owned property, so someone's gonna have to help identify what that is, and it's gonna be-
So, why is not wait until October 1st, after we, the association finds a list that is ours?
We can do that. So, the association will provide a list. Trustee Snoblin, Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Last checks. Last checks won't, will they be active until the 30th? So, after the 30th, payroll will be turned into TMI, and you'll put together checks, correct?
Yes.
I'm preparing right now for their end of the year checks.
Okay.
I should have that audited complete by this week, so I'll be turning it in this week, and you can go ahead and process it through at any time.
With all the stipends and shifts and everything?
Correct. Auto pay, call pay, everything.
Okay.
So, it's put together this week.
Chief, I'm gonna pass over others for the moment. Chief Karani and I spoke along with Chief Seibert, and wanted to ask you, John, if you wanted to do on the 30th, a walkout with anybody who wanted to do it, with the chiefs or whomever you wanted, yourself presenting them their helmets, their helmets and/or Class As uniforms. Do you have any interest in doing that?
I'll take care of my guys, I don't need the help from them.
Okay. So, you'll handle all that. Okay, Class As, I assume, since they fit the guys, they're gonna keep them?
And most everybody bought their own, yes.
Okay. Uniform returns, that's just like Class As, I would assume, correct? I mean, their uniforms are, they're, we don't rent them, they own them, correct, is what I'm getting at?
T-shirts and the pants they buy.
Right, so they own them. All right, equipment inventory. Conduct complete inventory of equipment. Been talking with the chiefs, Karani and Seibert about this, and Chief Karani had offered, he said he might have two guys that are on light duty that could assist with, with inventory and the rigs in the building. Okay, anybody have any other thoughts on that? I, I, I'll be on, or, I'll tell you what I've done, and then I'd like to hear comments from Trustee Snoblin and Trustee Grum. I spoke with Mike Hady, only because I didn't know who else to talk to on this, and he's gonna give me a dollar amount to provide one guy to basically have a laptop and do all the input, and then with the assistance maybe of two guys from Libertyville, go through and start to inventory trucks and machines and such. You got, either one of you have any other thoughts on that?
So, just one I would ask, is there any kind of current list available that someone can start from? And then, second, you know, I think, I can't, I'm offering a lend to people to help-
Right.
-input stuff, but we really would need somebody from Nolwood to work with them to identify what, you know, and, you know, as I've been hearing earlier, there's apparently association-owned property, district-owned property, so someone's gonna have to help identify what that is, and it's gonna be-
So, why is not wait until October 1st, after we, the association finds a list that is ours?
We can do that. So, the association will provide a list. Trustee Snoblin, Trustee Grum, as I'm thinking, do you have any thoughts on this, on equipment Trustee's holding, Trustee Grum, as I'm thinking, do you have any thoughts on this, on equipment inventory?
No, I, I think that makes sense. And I think we can. The only advantage to doing it before October first is we have members that'll be here on duty that would be able to assist. At least in identifying some of the equipment.
Well, once, you know, they provide a list, then it's kind of, you know, wait until October first, it's kind of, that identification.
I think the things that the association owns will most likely be removed before October first.
Okay.
There won't be that conflict of their stuff in Fire Department property.
Okay. Will we get the list prior to that? Because I mean, it would be beneficial to us to know what it is they're planning on removing. So if there's any discussion that needs.
Going back through the checks and invoices that the association has paid for, because we have the documentation on it.
Would, would it be if anybody was interested from Knowit helpful if they wanted to do some extra duty evidently, or whatever you want to call it, after October first to help your guys? I'm trying to find a good way here to have any additional assistance if you, if you wanted you guys with me.
I think we'd be.
Brian? Oh, yeah.
I, I did contact those two companies that you sent me, the one being Command Fire Apparatus. And he did send me a form that he could like fill out on each of the pieces of equipment. And then I would send that to him. He would review it. And if there's an interest there in the equipment, he would make a trip out here from Pennsylvania and take a look at it. And then might be willing to make an offer. So I will, I will make those available as well. Maybe we can get some of those filled out by the staff before they, they leave.
Three other items. One's the large tool box that's in our tool room that was donated by a past member. He would like that back. And go pine.
Okay.
Cardiac Meyer that we have on our rescue was donated by Lake Forest Hospital. They want it back. And the ballistic vests that were donated to us by North Shore Sports Club, they want them back.
Sure, sure. Okay. Chief Seibert, we had spoken briefly about truck forty-four and you were going to do a little checking into the grant.
There's a, you're back from the AFG people on that. There's some discrepancies on, on disposal or sale of that from the AMG award. So, okay, I can get more information on that.
My understanding from the research I did is you guys will get your three percent back minus depreciation. So whatever the total was that you guys put into it, I believe it was around thirty-eight thousand dollars. We minus depreciation, no matter what the vehicle sold for, the money funds have to go back to the company.
Right, and they had indicated something. Can you bring everybody up to date on what you, do you know about or what you spoke with them?
Basically what John's saying is there was, that you'd have to give back your, because the ninety percent grant, you're going to have to.
Right.
Sell it, right, you have to pay that back.
Okay, but were there some other options with that that you were suggesting?
The other option is to donate it to another fire department.
Okay.
There's the two options, either sell it, pay back, of course, and that would be required. If it has a value over five thousand dollars, which it does, and then, or you can transfer the ownership to another fire department.
Okay, well, that's something we should probably talk about with Libertyville and Lake Forest. Okay, let's follow up on that. Carl, any?
No.
Okay. Equipment surplus, apparatuses and surplus declarations. Excuse me. Brazels, excuse me, brazels and surplus declarations. That's what we're going to try to do with the inventory and then try to put a reasonable number on, on the, on the equipment based on the cost of new and the wear and tear and such. All of those pagers and two ways that are up in the closet upstairs. From what Mike Haiti told me today, said they don't have much of, of any use for anybody in this area. His suggestion was to basically hallet them up or put them up, list out the, list it out. Is, is that something that we can surplus out, Brian, maybe that another department could use? I'm being told they don't have any value because they don't, they don't work for, for anybody around here. Is that correct?
I saw a roll that's, unless you find somebody on eBay, won't pay ten bucks for a pager or a radio.
The, the simple answer is yes, but what we need to do, and any, the district, the district can dispose of the property owned by the district. But in order to dispose of any property owned by the district, the district board has to declare that property surplus. Typically, they'll do that by a resolution. What that means is I need to get a list and here's the information, that surplus that we're going to sell. Here's the information that we're going to donate to somebody else. And here's all the list of items that have no material economic value that we're going to otherwise dispose of. And give, give me those pieces of paper because all those become exhibits to a resolution I do that I give to the board that you have to approve that you got to, you got to do before you get rid of anything.
Okay. So that should happen, it sounds like, right after October first.
Dan.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Please.
I think that, you know, to get the list is going to, it's going to take some time. So I think you're probably looking at maybe your November meeting.
Wait, no, I meant it would start after.
Right, right, okay. I thought, I didn't know you were, I didn't know if you're expecting.
No, no, no.
Surplus ordinance back right for your next meeting, probably will be November.
Okay, Knox keys and inventory of keys. How does that work, chief?
Well, so I'll ask him to chime in on who has the, if that keys would need to go back to Knox or how it works. Because you, Knowit would have their, individually have their own key for their community. So, you know, those keys are going to need to be collected and either turned back to, I would say, probably turned back. Best bet would be to contact the Knox company and see what we have, or see what.
Do we have a list of Knox boxes in Knowit?
Do we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we get that list so that they can, you guys are going to have to change them out then, right?
Correct.
Okay, can we get a list of the Knox boxes that are out? So that Libertyville and Lake Forest can, can contact them and, and get them changed over to Libertyville and Lake Forest.
There's also Mavis Knox keys that are out there that would need to go back to Mavis, Mavis Illinois.
Yeah, they go, they go back to Mavis. Okay.
The other thing is if I was asked, I'd tell you, we also have Lake Bluff Knox box keys, our Knox box keys, and they have ours as well. So I'll go ahead and take care of those.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And then the inventory of the keys. Well, let me ask you this, would it be easier for you just to work directly with the chiefs on that? On the Knox boxes?
I just have to work with David.
Okay.
She's grabbed my glove.
All right, and then the other, the Knox boxes and the keys, you will find out, or you're going to find out, who do we turn them to?
I'll just leave them on my desk.
Oh, okay. All right, and then you'll give a list of where the key, or where the boxes are within the community for folks, or for Libertyville and Lake Forest. Okay. The North Chicago Agreement, they just actually paid for last year. Chief Karani, you're going to be the one that's going to be handling that or the one?
Yeah, we're setting up. Chief Seibert and I have communicated with Chief Urban and we're going to have a meeting for this.
Okay, you're going to discuss that. Okay. Mavis and SRT notifications, is that something you would handle, John?
Uh, sure.
Chiefs Karani and Seibert, you had to sign here, adopt fire and life safety codes, alarm monitoring. What do you want to do with that?
So we're going to, as we discussed in the, it's in the IDA, we'll be providing bureau services. So in order to have any kind of code enforcement for new construction or fire inspections, you'll have to adopt the ordinance, adopting a fire code that we use, Lake Forest uses. So there's some enforcement in the inspections and plan reviews. So we'll get you that information, you know, either in October or November where you can adopt. You know, have time to review it and then put on your, adopt it in the future.
Okay, so you'll, you'll get that forwarded. You have all three trustees' email addresses to get that to them?
Yeah, we can do that and then probably send it to Brian to review.
Brian to, sorry, Brian. Not trying to leave anybody out, so.
No, I gotta slide that into an ordinance format. We've done it for our own, we're just going to adapt different set, that's all. It's not a big deal.
Okay, residents' letters, we talked about that briefly already. It's going to be a letter going to everybody in the Rockwood Fire Protection District, signed by both of you to go out. And you're going to get a copy digitally to, to Mike and Snowman, and she'll get it out digitally, digitally as well, sorry. Station B key, we'll deal with that after October first. Station use, sir, you're up. Would you introduce yourself to the board and to the public and tell them what your thoughts are?
My name is Matt Faines and I'm with Interstate Realty in Barrington. And I'm, we're a small boutique real estate company that specializes in unusual real estate properties. We've done used car dealerships, new car dealerships, restaurants, office buildings, office condos, industrial buildings. And this building kind of fits into things we do, which are not the norm. Where it's a firehouse and a combination of offices and a large showroom for baby dealerships, small sports car companies, stuff like that. I really think that what we do is exactly what this is. It's, I'm not your general box seller. It's, I think it's twelve thousand, two hundred square feet. Twenty-three parking spaces, which is not a lot for a retail operation. But I do think there are some people out there that would be interested in this building. I think the recommendation, I came Friday, we met Pam, we came away with probably doing an RFP, request proposal, give it out to everybody, have those proposals and those offers go right to the attorney's office and he, and you can open them at a meeting and do it that way. We've done so much unusual pieces of property. I, we're not CB Richard Ellis, who probably wouldn't want a project like this because this takes hands on. I show all my properties. I'm there for the showings. I think there's some unusual things where this room has to be maybe still available to the city or village. And then a room for storage and stuff like that. I talked to Scott Hogan regarding the taxes because now it'll go on the tax rolls.
Right.
And their best estimation would be, the taxes would be about twenty-one, twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Twenty-one, three sixty-five is what he came up with, with the number for the real estate taxes. I think any lease that you do should be at least minimum five, but most likely ten years. And it should be a net, 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 where they pay common area maintenance, taxes and everything.
So when, when you develop a lease that you think would be applicable for this, first it has to go through the guy at the end of the table.
Right, exactly.
And then he will get it out to the three of us to look at for any, any comments. And you and I went over some of the uniqueness of this, hopefully keeping a district office, using this room for meetings and for elections. But there again, if you have a, a tenant that needs this, then we can readdress.
Yeah.
Some things. I haven't talked deeply with Chief Karani about using the, for the meetings if we had to, using the Libertyville Fire Protection District Meeting Room that they beat in. We haven't gotten that far yet, but.
They vote here too, right?
They do vote here, but again, if, if there was something lucrative enough to the district and we had to move the voting, it's certainly something we'd consider or address with the county and talk to them about something else that would be convenient for the residents.
I think it, it really depends on the tenant we find. I mean, he's going to probably dictate whether he can go along with somebody else in the building or not.
Okay.
And if he's willing to pay, you know, the price. I think, I mean, I think it's, you know, I, when you look at the, where the fire trucks are, it's triple trap, it's trench drains, it lends itself to automotive. If there's enough parking and, oh, there's a little more office than they probably need. So maybe we do get some back or take something off the rent to utilize this room and another room here. But I think, I think it has a lot of potential. The location's AAA. There's no doubt about it. Around forty-one, I mean, it's, it's great location.
All right, Trustee Snowman, Trustee Grum, do you have any comments, questions for Matt regarding this?
No, I'm good, not at this.
Okay, so you'll proceed with putting together a lease.
Yes.
And getting it to Brian. Right, for him to bless. And once he's blessed it, then he'll send, then he'll send it out to us and we'll deal with it into October then.
Okay. And then if we do go forward, no sign until October first, right?
Correct. Correct. Okay, next item, ESTV radios. Do you want to call, or Chief Karani said David told? Just one? Oh, it's out of the truck?
These are the, these, uh, this was from the Lake County ETSV. These are the computers and docking stations in the vehicles.
I'm not going to touch those, obviously.
No, ETSV said they would come and take.
Oh, okay.
They, yeah.
Okay, who, who wants to contact them?
I can't. I'll see Steve. Steve Winacki is the person in charge and I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, that again will be after October one. Okay. Mr. Brian says we cannot handle number ten, so there is no non agenda items. So I think we've handled everything we need to handle for now, unless the chiefs have anything else they want to say. Seibert or Karani? Dan, you have anything else?
No.
Yes.
Just one more thing, something, just thinking off the top of my head here. Records, when you talked about records earlier, your employee files, you're going to have to keep those somewhere for a long period of time. I think maybe forever.
Right.
That's one thing to think about, so I'm not sure how, you want to do that.
Again, they'll, we'll put them in the district office now. Whatever's in there can stay in the district office and be maintained by the district.
And then if Chief Harold has time or something, I think he, I would like to sit down and go over maybe some of the firehouse information. Some other things that we may need to look at. And then I'll get, also, to Brian, draft for a ordinance for the ambulance rates also, so.
Okay. I'll leave it up to the chiefs to contact each other if you don't need my assistance in that. Brian, any else we need to do on this, on the ordinance, the tentative?
The budget? No, because you're, we just had it tonight because it has to be out thirty days before that. You're going to have your meeting on October eighteenth.
Okay.
But I, I just thought I'd bring it because today it was available.
Okay, with that, I'll engage a motion to adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Oh, in favor, aye.